Department would like to submit with your approval to enter into a contract with Dennis Eaton and Air to replace the existing duck work at our office at 2806 Starkey Drive due to the fact that it's full of mold and mildew. And if you'd like to see proof, I can show you proof. But it's an amount of $8,425 and coming from budgeted fund 188,939, 48,100.
Where's that on here? Y'all? Name's C. No, P. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll look right over.
Any questions?
Thank you.
How are all of you?
Good.
I have four items on the agenda. The first is on the consent agenda, item D, which is a contract with Tree Pros. We bid out our tree trim for the year and Tree Pros was awarded the majority of the contracts, as you can see on this, for a cost of $2.225,168.50. Fifty cents for their work, the tree work for the year. And then Asquith, which is item E, was awarded Project 30, which is $29,425.
What was the difference? It'll back to D.
Mm-hmm.
You got $7.25, that's million. How much did you say?
D.
D.
Was Tree Pros, which is awarded to Project 26, 27, 28, 29, and they were the lowest bid on all of them except for Project 29. They were the second lowest bid, but the first person who had the lowest bid didn't follow our bid procedure properly, so they were awarded that project also. So their total was, for Tree Pros, was $2,225,128.50 for there.
And we divided that up last year. Is that what, have we?
So last year, Tree Pros and Asquith was also the only two people that were, that we got low bids from, those two companies, and they were split up. I think Asquith won a couple of extra, no, they just had one, but it was a bigger project they won last year, so it was a bigger difference. But basically, when we bid it out, we bid out each project, and so when they come back to us, they actually have to give us a cost per project, so.
Mary, what areas of the city will this cover? We know we get a lot of comments from residents, so please remind everyone on the council how you all will inform residents when their areas will be affected.
Yes. So we'll develop you all a new map like we did last year, so you will have that to share with your people. And also, we do it to multiple different ways. They get a phone call from us, and then we also send out notification postcards that says if they're in the area that's going to be trimmed. And it's, we do it about a month, a month and a half in advance. And we'll send you another, nothing like last year, a map that shows, I'll just skip this down because I can't see it very well. So we'll send you all a map. I don't know if you remember us sending the map last year that showed like the trimming areas, that showed the spraying areas, and we'll do that again this year, so you'll have that for your use also.
Is there any way you can go to, because I know these trees were cut down and I had some that was very angry in their own yard.
So we stay in our easement. We have an easement, and that's what we follow. And, you know, every year, trees grow, and so as they get bigger, they encroach on our easements. And so that's why one year, they may not be in the easement, the next year, they may. But we really, we, you have people that go out and notify, you know, kind of areas like that and in advance, because like I said, from year to year, you know, one tree may not have been in the easement, and it is the next year, and it'd have to be cut, so. But we just basically follow our easements and we trim from ground to sky, so. Yes. So I will, I will tell them that, relay the message, if there's some that weren't previously, because we are on a four-year trim cycle, so like I said, you know, four years, trees grow a lot, so we can change.
They'll do normal pay.
We do. Yes, we do. Any other questions about the tree contracts?
I brag on your people. I don't know who did it, but you remember a few weeks ago, whoever did some tree trimming up off some lines, it got into a culvert or whatever, and caused some water backing up. You guys, once you found out about it, were right out there and got it out, so appreciate you doing that. The people called me and were so tickled they got handled so quickly, so, yeah.
Before it rained again.
Yep.
Before it rained again.
This total tree, there's over $2 million, right?
Yes. Yes. So the third item is a contract with Chempro Services, which is item F, and that is the spraying services. And the bid that we put out was actually for multiple years for the same price, and so Chempro came back as a winner for that. And the total for Chempro this year for the work, they do obviously spray the right-of-ways, they do fire abatement, they do bare ground spray, so the total for that is $181,654.50 and five cents for Chempro to do the spraying of the right-of-ways. Any questions about that? And they also were notified before we do spray, and we actually send one of our employees out with them now because of some issues we were having in the past. So one of our employees is out there that can communicate between our customers and the people doing the work, so. So that's been, I think, a big, thank you, Michelle, for working with us on that, so. Any questions about that? All right, the last item we have is on the regular agenda, which is item C on the regular agenda, which is a customer construction charge. And so I sat with the utilities committee, and it's kind of went over everything with them. But in the past, we've always charged a per-foot charge for new construction or any relocation. And so with the cost of materials going up and the supply of getting the materials here, we've had some real issues with basically the amount of money the customer was paying versus what it's costing us now to do the job. And so what this is doing, we're restructuring the way we're doing our fees now, so it's not based on a per-foot cost, it's actually based on a material cost. And so it'll fluctuate up and down as the cost of materials fluctuate up and down, and so, and it's not just a per set foot cost. So do y'all have any questions about that?
I appreciate the information you provided us, and if any of you all would like that, Mary does have that all in a very detailed format. It was an exceptional explanation for something about which I am not the expert, so thank you.
It's a little detail, but that's kind of the gist of the reason that we're doing it. And this is, like, it's a new construction, and it affects people who are relocating.
Like, the contract has been updated in a while, but it?
It's, it was last, we did it last four years ago. We changed a few things, but he would know between 2018 and now how things were, so. We're trying to make it where we don't have to admit it again, so like I said, it'll just fluctuate as things fluctuate, so. Okay?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I've got a couple items on the consent agenda, G and H. Actually, G has to do with our Keep the Forest Beautiful Committee, that's one of the mayor's committees that we have that's, used to be the Green Team, used to be Florence Forward, I think, and it's had several different names, but we're now affiliated with the National Keep America Beautiful, and it's Keep Florence Beautiful. And also, we are a platinum member of TBA Sustainability Program, which is a big keyword used by businesses that want to locate in an area. It has to do with a lot of quality of life type things, green issue type things, it's just lumped into one thing called sustainability. We were originally a gold member in that program, and the only one at the time that was platinum was, I think, Nashville, and then Huntsville gained platinum status, and then we gained platinum status. So we're in a pretty unique group of people, and it gives you a good idea of what goes on as a total in our community that involves everybody. We've had influences from the UNA, involved with them. We've had different businesses out here, Mr., is it Trissel? You know, was, helped us a lot on the program, early in the program. So anyway, we got to keep this status, and as part of it, to keep it, we need to update our CO2 emissions, and we were real fortunate, it's time to have a young man that was doing intern work, John Batson. He loved the computer, and we put him to work, so he entered all that data for us initially, and we'd ask him would he be interested in doing it for the committee again, just on an hourly basis under contract, and he, he sent us what I think is a very generous proposal, $15 an hour to update the data for us. And I know he'll do us a great job because he's already familiar with it, so. He's working low as well as going through this for us, and we appreciate it. And so we just look at it as a win-win for us.
Any questions?
Thank you. The next one is a roof for a maintenance building at the wastewater treatment plant. We had a quote from Jargus Incorporated, had $26,500 to be paid from, from our structures and maintenance budgeted funds. This, this, last time we quoted this, it was about a third of this, or almost half, and with the cost of steel like it is, it's going up every day. If you look at the notes on the quote, the building is in, the roof is in pretty dire conditions. If we don't get it replaced, it's going to result in further damage to the building that will increase repairs tremendously, so we like to get this done as soon as possible. And again, it's in the amount of $26,500 to replace that roof.
Any questions? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
First item is item I. That is to also replace a roof at Martin Park. It's the bath house at Martin Park. It's in the amount of $2,377.98, and that bathroom is currently closed. We need to get that fixed.
Is that considered an emergent repair because it fell in, and so that's being looked at now?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item is J. It's a, to approve a contract with Thompson Tractor, and that is to provide labor equipment materials to install an engine machine guard for a skid loader mulcher, and that in the amount of $6,351.4. That is for a Forrester mulcher that we bought a couple months ago, and that's needed to be able to utilize that piece of machinery. Item K is to approve a contract with Lambert-Ezell Durham Architecture to provide architectural services on as-needed basis, and that amount is $125 per hour. Item L, approve a contract with Irons Electric to provide labor equipment materials to install a new combination motor starter at the Royal Avenue Pool for $2,400.
I just have to say it, that pool, okay.
Thank you.
It's a ton of money.
A little splash, babe.
Is water involved? It's going to cause some running?
That's right. Item M, to approve a contract with Building Specialties, labor equipment materials to replace a double-hinged basement door at the Florence Lauderdale Coliseum in the amount That's just a worn-out door at the Coliseum.
I'll swing the county's bag.
I don't know. I haven't asked them, but I got the 30, so maybe we'll, I'll ask for half that, too.
Get two kids, lay in.
That's right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
I have one thing on the consent agenda. It's item N, and this is a resolution to approve a contract with MG Roofing to provide labor equipment materials and the rest for a new roof at the Rosenbaum House. It's been leaking for quite a while, and though that would not concern Mr. Wright, it has certainly concerned me, because we have buckets every time it rains, you know, around the house. This is the original roof that was put on in 2000, when the city first purchased the Rosenbaum House and restored it.
So are they having to put decking and everything on there?
Do you know what? No, we're not. In fact, the first estimate we got about a year ago was $150,000, and that would have included all of that. But after consulting with the Frank Waterright Conservancy and having the head of their, like, restoration department come down and spend a couple of days with us, we've decided to go with the liquid silicone roof that would be placed on top of the existing roof.
It's a flat roof, right?
It has a one-eighth of a degree slope.
And what's the lifespan of that living?
Not completely flat. I'm sorry.
What's the lifespan of that with that new technology? Have they said?
It should, it actually should last much longer than the existing one, the 20-year one that we have now.
That is a lot of money for a roof.
It is $68,349. This was the low bid.
Yeah.
Just curious, what's the high bid?
Pardon me? The high, the high bid was about $10,000 higher.
And this company, you feel comfortable with them with this, the home and?
I have worried myself sick about it, but Calvin Durham is comfortable with it.
Okay.
And they're the ones who did the original restoration of the house, so if he's comfortable with it, I am.
Thank you. I know that's, it's a big tourist attraction, and I know it's really important that we get it up to shape.
And, and it will be well documented. We'll be taking many photos going through the process.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Is it insured?
Yes.
The roof is? In other words, like, I get 30-year roofs, you know, like they do with regular sheignels, so I didn't know if it had a, like, a year insurance on it.
I haven't, I haven't looked at all the details of, you know, of that, but, yes.
Okay.
I have item O on the consent agenda to enter into a contract with Safe Air Corporation in the amount of $20,274.81 to upgrade the primal vent system that is designed to remove the exhaust connection to go to the five trucks for five radars, is remove the exhaust out of the apparatus, the auto system itself.
Chief, please forgive me, I just haven't been able to see it up late. I was last there when I was getting one of the holiday shirts, and this is about the renovation. Is that all done and taken care of?
Station room?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
Except this.
Except this. I'll come down and visit. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, Chief. Mayor.
Good afternoon. I'd like to, before I start on this, just give you an idea. Since, since Shayna Walsh has started as our general fund, chief financial officer, and Bob is now our treasurer, I think we have everything in place. All the information is, at the end of March 31st, has gone to our auditor, Shannon, is now no longer employed with the city. That was the arrangement. Shayna and Bob have met with all our general fund departments. We've updated our budget, and I've asked both Shayna and Melissa Bailey to review and to go forward with our capital project plan and give us something that all of you will be able to monitor on an ongoing basis. So they're working on that. As soon as they end that ready, I will share that with you. First item I have tonight is the sign at the Star Play. Now that that project is complete, we had a 200, I think it was $237,000 playground that we agreed to pay $125,000 of that project. With that being said, both Shoals, Florence Rotary and the Greater Shoals Rotary worked to provide all the other equipment there for the base for the sign I'm asking you to pay for tonight to half of. We, we did some side out in the middle as well as some fencing. So that has gone very well. We had a great sit-off on that. But I'm asking you tonight, and it's item P, to agree to pay for the $8,800 sign for the general sign that's in place down there. There are a few more things they need to do, but I think we're in good shape.
Mayor, is there, is that the wayfinding signs like we already have in town? Will it mimic that or be a different design?
Well, it's, it was what stayed on the, you know, they did the arc sign, so it's not really a wayfinding sign.
More like an entry sign.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. It's a nimble, yeah.
Any questions? All right, the second item is item Q. It's asking you to approve a RACE Planning Grant application. The City of Florence is a part, is, we're a voting member of the MPO, and NACOG has, has applied for a, it's a resolution, a resolution to support the rebuilding of American infrastructure with sustainability and equity, a RACE Planning Grant. This grant is for the engineering for the overpass in Sheffield over the railroad. You say, well, how does that affect us? Well, it's one of the four cities this is, they're just asking for our support currently just for the engineering, so that's what I'm asking for this evening. Any questions?
Is there an amount of that, Mayor? Did I miss it?
I don't have that amount. All they're asking for us is to support that.
Oh, not to provide the engineering?
No, we're not, they're not asking for any dollars at all.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, lastly, at the end of last, the last meeting, we agreed that tonight we would have a resolution on the agenda regarding the Greater Shoals Broadband Cooperative District. On the Wednesday after a council meeting, our city lobbyist, Philip Ryan, arranged for Mr. Jordan, Mr. Musgrove, and myself to visit, actually visited two individuals, the head of Aldy, who's John Cooper, and that was involving College Street Bridge Project and some other roadway funds to see if there's anything out there. And the second was to Kenneth Boswell, who's former mayor of Enterprise, who's now over a decade, and we went to talk to them about, you know, all the money we're hearing about, about funding for broadband and other things. We talked to him about that, and also talked to him about some other monies that could be available, for instance, charging stations for our new parking deck, and we passed that information along to Calvin and to Mary for consideration there, if there's some money out there for them. But I just say, once we got back, I sent all of you an updated report about what we learned, what we heard, and I guess what I would say to you tonight is sort of my personal feeling that I shared in that, in that message, but I'd like to share that publicly. And, you know, we've had lots of discussions, got lots of questions, lots more out there, and every one of you, we've had, I know we've had a conversation, we've listened to lots of discussions, and I've been to a number of meetings. So I hope as we move forward tonight, we put this issue behind us. So I'd like to read quickly where I stand. I'd like to address my personal thoughts about this process after attending what seems like countless meetings. I realize there are many, many questions left to resolve, and ultimately, this entity may not indeed find what I'll call the golden broadband ticket, which I think we need. However, I believe broadband is what I believe to be the superhighway that will be fundamental to our area's growth for the future and shouldn't be left up to only the decisions of private companies and their bottom lines. Obviously, most of the funding we hear about is focused on rural access, but I truly believe that access will also require urban areas to expand too. I think if anything we've learned from COVID is, it's proven that online business and learning is here to stay, and it's changing all too rapidly. I believe we, as the City of Florence, the largest city in Northwest Alabama, certainly need to be part of a greater discussion here in the Shoals about broadband. And because, and I've said this before, because it doesn't commit us in any way financially, I'm certainly willing to support this cooperative district plan, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions? I have a few comments we all want to add. Where is Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Jordan and Council. I have one item on the consent agenda, and that is consent agenda item R. This is a resolution to approve a memorandum of agreement with ALIA, the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, regarding the use of ClearView AI, which is a facial identification program for the police department. Here's the benefit of this, when we hear facial recognition software by law enforcement and the government makes people nervous, by entering into an agreement with ALIA, they are purchasing the licenses, they are willing to give them to local agencies with the understanding that we agree and commit to their policies, procedures, and the law, which essentially requires every single use of this to be tied to an actual case number in a criminal incident. It's for legitimate law enforcement purposes. Right now, we work through ALIA to run criminal histories, we can run driver's histories, I can search all of your information or anybody else's information if I have a legitimate law enforcement purpose to do it, and I face criminal consequences and even fines if I operate outside the laws to access that. This is software that uses facial recognition and open source resources. It would search Facebook if you would, but we have certain strict guidelines that we're required to, to follow if we're going to participate in this program. So they're spending the money, and they're willing to give us the licenses if we will enter into this agreement where we agree to abide by their rules and policies and procedures.
Do you have that now? Facial recognition?
We do not have the capacity at this time.
I do. Sorry. Thank you. Chief, at what point do you feel like this will be implemented? This is kind of brave new world stuff for us.
I think others, others are already there. And ClearView, there's lots of YouTube, lots of information on Google that's out there. It only uses open source resources, social media, if you will. So I'm going to have a picture of an unknown person, I'll have a, have a picture of this person, and I want to see if I can take this unknown person's picture and run it through this software, which will search open source social media accounts and try to link the face with a name. And we'll use it only when there's a criminal case tied to it. I don't get to sit around one day and go, you know, I want to see what I can do and use it as a toy and play with it, just like I can't run, you know, Nick Saban's driver's license or his criminal history right now. It's a violation of criminal law for me just to pick somebody's name out and run it. The same thing would apply here. It'd be a violation of criminal law for us to misuse this, so it's only for legitimate law enforcement purposes tied to a particular case number with a known suspect. with a known suspect, known criminal case that we want to search.
No, absolutely. But how quickly do you feel like it will be implemented?
It'd be, they're going to send us the license, we'd have to get the software, go through the training. So, I mean, I think weeks, not necessarily months, but it's not days.
Okay. This, maybe by the end of this summer?
Oh, very likely, very likely. Maybe by the beginning of summer.
Thank you.
It's just an agreement, not any money going out or anything?
No money at all. They purchased the licenses, we're just agreeing to follow, to follow the law and their policies and procedures. All right. Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you.
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 Thank you. I have two items on tonight's agenda. The first one is item 11S. It's a contract addendum. Our existing contract with Key Consulting Services to add an additional spoke to our current GIS model. We did add a team member in my department, and per the terms of our contract, when we do that, then we amend our contract to add that person's access to the modeling portion of the software. It's a one-time fee of $500 plus an additional $100 a month to our existing contract. And I gave you just a little bit of background because it's been a little over a year since we initiated that contract with KCS. So I have the background there for you. But basically, this is the backbone for our GIS model that we use in the department. So one-time fee of 500 plus $1,200 annually or $100 a month to what we're already paying.
Good question.
All right. And then regular agenda item 12A is an annexation of 4,600 Chisholm Road. And the last page of the memo that I handed out does have a map. It's approximately 10.7 acres. There's currently one structure on the property. It appears to be a barn or storage building lean-to of some sort. This property is directly next door to the fire training center. It does, so it does make a continuous contiguous connection to the fire training center, which is in the city limits, and it does meet the requirements for annexation, and it does conform to the city's conference of plan. Of course, with annexations, there aren't public hearings, but you do have it on your regular agenda.
Good question.
Thank you.
Good evening. How are y'all?
Good. How are you?
Good. I have item P on the consent agenda, and it is a fee proposal with Goodwin Mills Kaywood to provide both architectural and engineering services for the new payment center on Seville Street. We purchased the land earlier this year. Their total fee, which is a lump sum fee, that's hopefully, well, it's not supposed to move based on the overall cost, is $127,500.
So we're having $127,500?
Yes. And that included all the services, the overall package of it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I have hunched federal heads and done everything I know to the thermostat, and I can't get any cooler in here. I'm sorry.
We were discussing a new city club trailer while you...
I apologize. I think I may rip it off the wall when I go back over there, but...
They'll get a line on it.
I have two items on, well, I'm sorry, I have one item that's on the agenda and one item that I would ask the council to add if I can answer your questions in case with your approval. The first item that's on the agenda is the grant of an access easement to M&amp;K Properties LLC. This is a small sliver of property located next to Blackberry Trail that the city owns. And the M&amp;K Property owns the property behind it, and this is just to grant them an access easement over this little sliver of property to reach their property. And it's been approved or reviewed and okayed by the planning department and the parking rep department and the engineering department. So, and it's unpaid, it's at the end of where the, unless I'm mistaken, it's, it's just a very small piece of property that's at the end of the pavement.
Is it directly across from Mars Hill Road there, behind the Blackberry Trail houses?
This is, I think this is Clubhouse Drive.
Oh, Clubhouse Drive? Okay. Yeah, I got you. Okay, by the car park.
So, and it would be, I mean, in the easement, they agree to maintain or to repair. Again, it's just a very small piece of undeveloped land, so they couldn't really tear it up just driving over it anyway. The next item that I would ask be added is an ordinance to approve a purchase contract and authorize the sale of a, of property at 146 East Duncan Avenue in Florence. And this is not really city property. This is property, we've done it before, where the Drug Task Force through the Circuit Court seized property and the court forfeited it to the City of Florence because the Drug Task Force is not a legal entity. So the court has to, to vest the title in a legal entity, and that's the city. And then the Drug Task Force sells the property, in this instance, through a real estate agent. So the city's only role in this is, is to approve the contract that they've entered into. They're selling it for $45,000, and there's a $10,000 approximate mortgage on the property. And then the 40, the remaining $35,000, as always, will be used by the Drug Task Force. That's correct, Chief. So, so when they seize property, the money goes back into the Drug Task Force program. So...
So how do you determine who gets the valuable property?
The, in this case, they lit, the real estate agent listed it, and I guess just put a sign in the yard and took off, as best I can tell. So, but that's all done by the DA, the Drug Task Force is a board composed of the district attorney, the police chief, and the sheriff. And so that, by the time it gets to the city, the judge has already forfeited the property. So, any questions?
Who are we going to add there?
That'll be on the regular agenda.
Yeah, regular agenda. Make that item 12F.
Yeah. Thank you.
And which one did you say about?
We'll make it 12F.
Not so, let's see. Before we do that, Bob, you want to, we need to go ahead and add a liquor license to the agenda.
Yes, that would be item 13A, for general business.
And that's a liquor license for, Bob will go ahead and say that. He's needing to have a motion to add that. We have a couple of board members wanting to go over. They are, on the beautification board, we had an application of Kristen Sebo, and she's on application. And I'd like to go ahead and have a motion that we appoint her to the beautification board. Motion, Mr. Edward Segal, Michelle, all in favor of the motion. Also on the library board, we have a reappointment, Deion Johnson. And I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we reappoint her to the library board. She's eligible.
Second.
All in favor of the motion? And the last is the, is a seal of regional library board. This is a joint appointment with the county, and Nancy Gons is a flat for that. And we'll send that on to County for their approval. Right here, a motion to reappoint Nancy Gons.
Motion.
Motion by Jamie Segal, Mr. Edward, all in favor. One last, we do have opening, we'll carry on the civil service board. At the present, we do have an application of Mr. Stevens, I think he was on the last time, from Memphis, the farmer of the city of Memphis, John Cardrady, cover shop. Father-in-law, anyway, we'll take an application. If he has one, we'll take some till next time. That's all the forms and all the business. And I believe we don't need to turn it over to Philip White Fairworth, Phil. Now, Phil, we'll take it actually.
Sorry, I couldn't have Timothy up here. He had to go do soccer. But I'm Ashley Winkle, and I'm here on behalf of Downtown Florence Alliance. I almost said Florence Main Street, but suck in my hand for all the time. But we wanted to recognize our board members that served in 2021 that exited. And so if y'all will allow me to do that really quickly, I would appreciate that. First up is Ms. Connie Wallace. If you would come up, I think that we're going to get a picture, maybe. You also, in 2020, got the Main Street Hero Award, and so we're going to give that to you. We appreciate that. That's from Alabama Main Street Program. So here is that, and here is our appreciation of you being a board member. And here is a bag, and here is a picture. And then Jackie Hendricks, are you still at yay? I believe, I thought, so I'm glad you're still here. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
So, and... Jordan, we had two rolls in this meeting today. And sir. Okay, one more thing. Y'all, I'm operating off somebody else's notes, whose handwriting I don't have. So that should make things really fun. Obviously, we are super thankful to you guys, but we wanted to provide y'all with an update of where we are with the organization, and just introduce you to the new board members. Obviously, Timothy is the president. He just had to go do soccer. And I am the incoming president for next year. Brandon Brown, Jack White, Kevin Haslam, Kyle Mangum, Susan Abrams, Tyler Ross, and Brad Lynch are the remaining board members. And we are going to be going through an executive director transition in the coming weeks. Stephanie has been wonderful, and she has taken a new job over in Huntsville, and we're sad to see her go. But we wanted to give y'all an update that we hope to have that position filled in the next 16 to 90 days. And then, obviously, on the sheet that y'all were handed, I'm not going to go through everything, but it has the accomplishments of the organization for the 2020, 2021 year. Just some highlights, the Share of the Shoals class that we've created and done that just really gets our service industry in downtown involved, and knowing what they need to be pointing tourists and even locals to as they come in and dine, and hopefully we send them out to do other things. We've had this year four investor meetings. We, I cannot read his handwriting, something else that he wrote on here. And we are doing all of our First Fridays again, thankfully. After COVID, it was a little bit harder to get things off the ground, but we're back in the swing of things. We did the Christmas parade. We created the graffiti alley back behind Court Street. And we've had 280 copies of a coffee table book that were written by Billy Ray Warren. We've had on and on, lots of things, all the things on here. I'm not going to go over everything. There is on the second page, all the goals of the four committees, and that is for this 2022 year. That is what we have tasked ourselves with, obviously with searching for a new director that's going to sideline a few things, because there will be focus on that. And then on the third page, you'll see our 2022 budget. And with the cut in our funding, we do have a deficient of $18,334.80, and we will have to pull that from our reserves. And we did want to come tonight and ask for that amount, that $18,334, to be given to us to help us with our funding, so that all of our time is not spent on fundraising, but on making downtown the wonderful place that it is and continues to be. And so that is the extent of what he had written down. But I'm happy to answer any questions or try to answer any questions that you guys have. And we're very appreciative of all that y'all do for our organization.
Ashley, I just wanted to congratulate Stephanie on that new opportunity. We wish you only the best. And I, for one, am certainly sorry to see you move on. I think you've done a great job leading the way for DFA. So thank you. And thanks to all the board members, too, for all of your...
I do follow up with that. Stephanie, thank you, and we wish you good luck in your, your new job. And thank you what you, what you've done for DFA, as well as the board members out there in the Philippines. Thank y'all so much.
Thank y'all.
We'll take off about, I can't see it, five minutes. Now, running behind.